We'll get started. Good evening, welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools School Board Meeting for Independent School District 13 for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2019. Make the call, the meeting in order, and ask you to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome, everybody. Laura, if you would, roll call, please.
Mueller?
Here.
Seaberson?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Samurai?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
And Superintendent Kathy Kelly?
Here.
Thank you, Laura. Our mission statement, creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the agenda approval, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence. Start with the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Lorian?
Second.
Molly?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Announcements, November 4th, there'll be no school, it's a grading day. November 5th is a district in-service day, there's no school, it's a Monday and a Tuesday. November 12th at 5:00 PM, there'll be a school board subcommittee on policy. Also, November 12th at 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. November 19th at 5:30, there'll be a school board work session. And November 26th, which is a Tuesday, there'll be a regular school board meeting. Correspondents, Superintendent Kelly, any correspondence this evening?
As chair members, there's no correspondence to report tonight.
Okay, thank you. Communication to the board, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to the brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Not seeing anybody out there, so keep moving. Consent agenda, which includes the personnel report and lane changes. Looking for a motion to move that forward.
So moved.
Laura?
Second.
Lorian, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Next up would be acknowledgements of contributions. If I can get a motion in a second, and then I'll read that one.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Acknowledgements of contributions resolution, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district requests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose, and applies the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of pupils thereof. Therefore, be resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background of the amount of $2,033.86. And that detailed background is as follows, value and kind. Donations of classroom supplies were made to Highland Elementary by Kids in Need for Ms. Knoll's class, estimated value $788. Donation of classroom supplies was made to Highland Elementary by Kids in Needs for Ms. Maxwell's class, estimated value $354. Donation of classroom supplies was made to Highland Elementary by DonorsChoose.org for Ms. Blake's class, estimated value $641.86. Donations of shoes was made to Columbia Academy by Francis Lewenstein for student needs, estimated value of $50. Then a donation of classroom supplies was made to Highland Elementary by Sage Auto for Ms. Skoye class, estimated value $200. Total fiscal year 2019-2020 monetary contributions to date $12,345.83. Discussion, comments?
As always, it's appreciated.
Very much so.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's always one of the highlights is to see all the stuff that people are willing to share with us, so. Okay, hearing no further discussions, is a resolution, so Laura, if you would, please do a roll call.
Mueller?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Samurai?
Aye.
Palmer?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Discussion reports and information items, reports from members of the board. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. Lorian, would you mind going first today?
Sure. Since our last meeting, I attended our listening session at Highland Elementary during conferences. I really enjoyed being in the schools for that, so look forward to more of our listening sessions to come. I also attended the high school's National Honor Society induction. That's always such a great event, and our kids just do so much to get involved in that. I attended a middle school football game, the homecoming football game, and pep band, and stayed in the snow for the fireworks. So thank you to the boosters for donating the money for the fireworks show, it was a great time. I attended conferences at Columbia Academy, our work session last week, and had many conversations with community members.
Thank you. Laura?
Well, I also attended the conferences over at Columbia Academy, as well as the work session, and the conferences were very, very well attended. It was really, really good to see, to see every, I mean, everybody so, and it ran so well, I mean, it just, it moved flawlessly. So, great appreciation to all the staff out there on how, on how smoothly everything went. And that's pretty much it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Paul?
I attended the conferences at the high school.
Thanks. Molly?
Yeah, I attended some volleyball games at the middle school, some football games, also some strikers soccer games, and conferences at the middle school, and also Natty and I had an opportunity to do a listening session at the school, and same as Lorian. I think it was great, it was fabulous, we got to talk to a lot of parents and teachers, and really a good idea, and I'm glad we're there. And the work session last week, that's it.
Okay, thank you. I also was at the Highland, the listening session at Highland Conferences, and I like the format, looking forward to the word getting out and tweaking it for how we get people to come and talk to us, so that was nice. I attended the Hall of Fame Dinner, the work session, I was at conferences for the high school, and I, kind of unrelated to school board, but was asked to come back to Valley View to talk to their first graders as somewhat of a historian of Columbia Heights, which kind of hurt a little bit. It was a teacher that years ago as a firefighter would go into the classrooms, and she said, "Okay, well now that you're not a firefighter, what do you think about coming in and talking about fun facts of Columbia Heights since you've been around so long?" And I'm like, "Okay." It was fun to get in the classroom, talk to the kids, as always, they have great questions, they made me laugh. One of them compared me to a pitcher in one of the books, which made me feel even more like a historian, so. But overall, it was, it was actually, it was a lot of fun, so I was grateful that she reached out and asked me to do that, so. And that concludes my report. Superintendent Kelly?
Mr. Chair and members, I participated in both the licensed and the non-licensed labor management meetings this month along with other administrators in the district. I attended the Columbia Heights High School Football Pep Fest, and we did hold that in the gym, even though it was under construction, it was really fun to see. I attended the Hall of Fame Dinner and the Homecoming Game, and I want to thank everybody who organized everything, because it was really a week full of homecoming activities, and they were all really well done, I think the kids had fun. And I would just like to extend special thanks to Gary and Kay Mayer, who play a pivotal role every year in the ongoing success of the Hall of Fame Dinner, and I think it was the biggest crowd I've seen down there in a long time. So it was a really good dinner, well attended. I met with Mr. Doug Darnell, he's the executive director of the Tri-Metro Conference, which we are now hosting this year, and Don was there as well, because the, really, the purpose of that meeting was future planning, and what are we going to do for the rest of the year? We've reinstated the principals' meetings that have kind of fallen by the wayside, so Dan Robleski will be chairing that, and Antoine will be chairing the A.D.s, and then I'll just chair the governance committee. And so, that's going to be an exciting part of the year, to have them here, and I always like to show off our buildings and our programs and things like that, so I'll give them an opportunity to really see Heights in action. They were super impressed with, not mine, but Don's organizational skills at the first meeting, and so we hope to go up from there. Both district administration and building principals participated in our first Lead and Learn, which is our PLC. We did that, and the major focus of that meeting really was on the implementation of the PLCs and the personalized learning communities, and that is really going to be one of our big pushes this year, so we really dug down deep into the data, took a look at how the implementation process was going, had talked about how the teachers were doing in the process, made plans for what the in-service is going to be following that, the professional development. We are going to read this year the book Amplify Your Impact by Michael Muffoni and Susan Sparks, and really the focus of that book is how to collaboratively coach PLCs. It's a really great book, and he's a wonderful presenter, and he's coming out again November 5th to work with staff and administration on that, so. And that will be on November 5th, and I really want to say special thanks to Tara Tucker, because she's really leading the point on this and keeping us whipping, cracking the whip, and also organizing the present, the presenters, so thank you Tara for that. I had coffee and conversation with Chief of Police Lenny Austin. It was fascinating, he had just come back from what I call Chief of Police Boot Camp, I'm sure it has a fancier title, and so it was nice to see him again, I think he'd been down there since July, just got back around September 15th. So we had our common exchange of ideas, and then I've had multiple contacts with some of you around the table, and I appreciate that, and that's all I, I was at the work study, and that's all I have, so thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we'll keep things moving. Next up is Item C, which is Building Vision Card for Highland.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Principal Michelle DeWitt and I are here this evening to present the Highland Elementary School Strategic Roadmap. So of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner, all belong, all succeed. And this strategic roadmap encompasses all four directions, and so we've really focused on all of the core values of community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. This is an informational update, so that we will not be back for governance. I'm sorry. So as you know, the school district administration staff, community members, parents, students have gone through a long process of tweaking and refining and honing in the strategic roadmap, which includes the mission, core values, vision, and the four strategic directions. So this evening, Principal DeWitt is going to present on the new strategic directions for Highland.
All right, good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to share where Highland is at on our new strategic direction. So we are looking at a lot of different areas under this new plan. First is percent of licensed staff participating in health and wellness professional development, which is high. At Highland, you can see we're at vision in that area, as well as reduction of teacher absences. So we looked at last year's first month of school, so the first 30 days of school compared to the first 30 days of school this year, and we were at a reduction from the previous year, so we're at vision in that area, and that's a really important piece, not only for students, but also for the district. Obviously, we want classroom teachers in classrooms teaching rather than substitutes. And with this substitute shortage, that's also a benefit, just having fewer substitutes needed in the buildings. The third area is student attendance days, and so we were, this is last year's data, so we were at, I believe, 84.1%, so almost at progressing, so that's daily rate of attendance, or average daily rate of attendance. On the mental health screener, we do a mental health screener in the spring, so that we're able to identify students based on the knowledge of the classroom teachers after they've gotten to know students for a full year. So the students are then placed into appropriate mental health services in the following school year. So the goal is always that we place the students that we identify. So part of that is getting parent permission, so that's usually the area that's the most difficult, or that they may move, but we were able to place over 90% of our students into services. And then, number of sessions focused, focused on trauma. So Highland, that has been a focus for the last three years, so looking at last school year, and then into what we've already done this fall, we're at well above four sessions at Highland. School climate, out-of-school suspension incidents, we're at, and I may have you explain a little bit more background on that.
Sure. So, as you know, the district is, and all of the schools are focused on reduction of out-of-school suspensions, we're also really focused on reduction of that disproportionality and disparity across the different races, and students with special needs or not special needs. So looking at, looking at compare, the comparisons, it's of the total number of students, how many of those students are out-of-school suspended? And so the vision is less than 10%. Sometimes we'll find, you know, one student might have some particular needs or displaying specific behaviors, and they might be a repeater, which is something that the administration and the student support team at the school can really hone in and see what kinds of supports that particular student needs. And so, that's what this is reflecting, instead of, you know, many, many, many different students being put out of school and away from the classroom, the idea is really having that to be as few as possible. Does that make sense?
So we're at vision for both out-of-school suspension and in-school suspension. Getting into the academic data, so utilization of learning management systems, for example, Schoology, Moodle, Google Classroom, ThingCentral, Dreambox, which is a big one at Highland, because every classroom is using Dreambox on a daily basis, we are at 90% of, or better, it's 100% of all classrooms. Our FAST data, this is from last year, so this is, last year's data only includes the CES, so it's the reading fluency. This year, we will have some scores for A reading and A math, so we'll have a little bit different information next year for the board meeting, but 40 to 49% of our students met their growth target. And then, we also keep data on students meeting their math FACS targets, so we look at that several, at each report card, so that would have been at every report card last year, and we were between 51 and 60% of students meeting those targets last school year.
So again, with the new strategic plan, this is our baseline year for collecting data on this, on the new metrics, and then, so as we move forward over the next few years with this plan, the ideas that will move up on that one.
All right. This next area is communication, and how the buildings communicate with families, and we have kind of one outlier, it's more of a secondary program, there are not a lot of elementary, and I actually can't see my presenter notes, but I could have told you exactly how many families signed up at Highland, it's very, very few that sign up for Parent View. So we are at intervention level, it's something like 70 families in the entire building have even signed up for it, which compared to a secondary building, most families do. But we do communicate out in other methods, obviously, principal communications to families either via Blackboard or newsletters. Our fam, percent of families enrolled in CSO is extremely high, that's our main communication method from the classrooms to the families in the elementary school, kind of in lieu of Parent View. And then also, the percent of teachers using CSO, which at Highland is 100%, all classroom teachers are using it.
So again, CSO is an app that parents can sign up for and have direct communication with the students, with their child's teacher, they get photos, they get updates, the principal can push out information that way, right there on a, on a parent's cellphone. So it's been, it's been really exciting, and the principals can track the usage as
The next area is family engagement, so as most of you know, we do have a lot of evening events at Highland, and they are, are very well attended, so we did compete a little bit with homecoming, and I think because it was such a blistery night, and our event was right before the homecoming game, we were packed for our first movie night. We do have more than eight events per year, we typically have at least one a month. Percent of families visiting CSO at least one time per week, so like, like Xena said, we're able to track how often parents are going. I would say pre-K to H3 families are, are using it much, at a much higher rate, especially pre-K and K, they're looking at it on a daily basis. Percent of families participating in pre-K to five conferences, we were at 84% of our families attended this fall session. We do keep track of that really carefully, because we are collecting signatures for the Title I compacts as well. Parent, percent of parents returning mandatory forms, so the forms that we looked at, we had a new form that's about identifying race in schools, we have the internet form, and then the free and reduced lunch form, which we know that that's a very important form for our district and for our building as well, and we were at 95% return rate of our free and reduced lunch form. And then, athletics and activities participation in grades one through five, we did kind of use a combined last year and this fall, because we've only had one semester, we just started our first semester of Encore, so obviously, we wouldn't have as many students who have participated yet, although we will have three semesters, so students will have the opportunity to get classes throughout, sometime throughout this year.
So that, yeah, that data points largely Encore, and then you also had destinies, things like destination imagination that they do at the elementary.
All right, improving variability is important, that was one of, I would say, my highest concern is when, when we were redoing our strategic plan from the last time, and talking about the importance of, which is, you'll see, one of Highland's goals is predictability and reducing variability in classrooms. And so it is important that our grade, our entire grade level teams stay very similar in their instruction and the methods that they're using. So we do have a lot of planning time, so our, our classroom teachers are meeting as a grade level team at least two times per week for PLCs, and then they're also meeting at least one time for week, per week for common planning time. The percent of teachers daily using grade level curriculum, so this is, I would say, I'm probably pickier on this than other people may be, but we do have a wide variety because of teachers using intervention curriculum, which would not be on grade level, but there is an expectation at Highland that every student have the opportunity to be presented on grade level material in reading and math daily. So that is occurring in every classroom. And then, variation from budget, I definitely stay on budget every year, as Denise shakes her head. All right, so our school goals, so I talked about it a little bit, but overall, overarching, and if you were, if you were down on my media center, you would see this posted on the whiteboard that I saw today when we were having our staff meeting, but we, our school-wide goal is predictability of academic and behavioral experience at Highland, and what that means is academic rigor for all students, so we talked about every student being able to participate in on-grade level material, even if they are not on grade level in reading and math. That we are really working on meaningful relationships with students, and at a predictable level. So we have been fortunate enough to receive innocent classroom training at Highland, so part of the training is really working on developing relationships with students, finding the good in all students. And so I think that that is having great impact on relationship building with teachers and students. And then also, behavior expectations throughout the school, so really tightening up what does it look like in the hallway, what does it look like in the lunchroom, playground, in every classroom. So that's our overarching goal, but then breaking that down into literacy and mathematics. We really focused last year, and will continue to focus this year, on time on task during the literacy block, so that we're hoping that students are really utilizing their independent work time, that's the time where it can get kind of loose, and that we're measuring that by the classroom teacher being accountable for what students are doing during that independent work time, as well as administrative and peer reviewer walkthroughs of really noticing what's occurring, and I have, I caught a few good photos today. My fifth grade all has reading in the afternoon, they're the grade that has their specialist time in the morning, they have lunch right away, starting at 10:40, but their afternoon is academic central, so they have reading and math right up till the end of the day. So one of the photos, I'm really excited, I walked in Ms. Roll's classroom today, and she had a group of students, and her student teacher had a group of students, and then I was looking at each student around the room that was doing independent work, and you'll see a picture of one of the boys. Every student was engaged in a book, and there were a couple of students that were on computers, but it's, that is the expectation of using the time wisely, that students need to be reading during independent reading time. And then also, that we're really trying to increase our oral reading proficiency, and that's that FAST test, so we measure that by CES, it is a good predictor of how well students will do on the MCA as well. So strategies that work to develop oral reading fluency with students is intervention at most grade levels at Highland. And then we are continuing in our second year of strong focus with Dreambox, so we expect to have at least 70% of our students meet expected growth, that was one of our discussion points at the fifth grade PLC today, was how students are doing so far with Dreambox, and the fifth grade team has really set an expectation that the students cover at least seven objectives in a week. And so, they're really monitoring it by kind of a week-by-week basis, and then if students are, if they're not meeting that objective, then conferencing with them and figuring out how they can get to that level. So, fifth grade is really on board, that, it was an area where they were just kind of dipping their toe in it, I felt like, last year, but wanting to increase their math scores this year. So just a few things that I was able to capture today, so reading in the science room, just reading across the school, but I thought that was really interesting, they were reading, completing journals in science, and this boy in the upper right-hand corner is in, a fifth grader in Ms. Roll's room, you know, really into his book, and this is at like quarter to two in the afternoon. And then down in the opposite corner is her student teacher, a Terry student teacher from the U of M, and she's working with a group, and it may look like they're on the computer, but they're actually reading a story that's on the computer, it's a Time Magazine story. And then the last one was, was really interesting, Ms. Knoll's LEAP class goes down and helps once a week in our pre, our full-day pre-K class, and so they do a variety of things, but it's really kind of a mentorship program and an opportunity for them to give back to the school. And so, today, they, there were two of Ms. Knoll's students for two of the pre-Kers, and they were working on a match, teaching the kids how to play a matching game, and then participate with them. And it was really fun to watch, and look at how much the LEAP students also benefit from it. So those were some of the things that we, I saw today, walking around. Questions?
I realized how much I miss Highland, but I really appreciate a lot of the work that you're doing, the detail, and following up with a lot of your steps, and also the relationship focus. I do have a question on the second slide, when you talked about the out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions.
Yes.
I don't know if I missed something, I'm just not clear on the 10%.
That's why I had Xena explain.
Yeah, and I still don't get it, and so, and one other question that falls within that is, how are we addressing the disparities within that?
Yep, so, first of all, talking about the disparity, once a month, the district discipline team meets with all of the assistant principals and some district staff, and then also meets with the principals and the directors and the superintendent to review that data and have those conversations about the, what we're doing to be proactive, and we're, we're looking And we're, we're looking, like even today, we look to see, compared to last year, where are we at in terms of numbers, but then also reducing the disparities. We're looking at that by race. We're looking at that by students who have an IEP. And we're also looking at this year by gender. Ten percent or fewer means, ten percent of the total school population.
So I had about five hundred and eighty students last year. I believe I had about forty-two or forty-three out-of-school suspensions. But looking at the individual child. So one child might, might make up three of tho, three of the suspensions. So looking at individual students who, who unfortunately were suspended.
Sure.
Compared to the general population.
Okay, and, and just be, to play devil's advocate, just to challenge this a little bit. Where is our like room for growth on this? And I know that this is already set and the metric's already there, but that's, I guess, what I'm looking for is like, how are we gonna really kind of hone in and, and get those numbers a little more clear?
Yep, in, in a couple of minutes, I'm gonna present to you the district-wide data and you'll see there's room for growth there. Also, we really have grown quite a bit, or, you know, progressed in this area over the last two years. We've seen a significant drop in our two-year data. You know, so there, there has been room for growth. Each school's gonna be a little bit different.
Yeah, okay.
No one is satisfied in terms of where we're at in general. But really, you know, at Highland, they really are working, as, as Principal DeWitt mentioned, over the last two years, they've systematically studied and researched trauma and have learned trauma-informed practices. And then this year, moving towards that really in-depth training on, called Innocent Classroom. And so they're just, they are really ticking along and doing a lot of different restorative pieces. But you'll see different metrics for the different schools and for the district-wide.
This was a really, we went back and forth on the metrics many times as a group before we selected this. It was really difficult to come up with a measure that everyone would be, could be satisfied with. And we wanted to include in-school suspension because that is an area, especially with special education, because in-school suspension is equivalent to out-of-school suspension. So it isn't, it's another piece and it's also where we're sending data now for the human rights to stay reportable. Other questions?
Yeah, so, yes and no. I mean, well, first of all, I'm glad to see that major focus is the mental health and wellness, especially when you're, you're, you're looking at the overall picture, you know, with even suspensions and things like that. Obviously, the more, the more meaningful relationships that are built, the, the more comfortable the students are, the less issues the students are gonna have and the more they're gonna be able to focus, as well as overall school climate. So I'm really happy to see, and, and especially the trauma. How, how, have, have all the staff had the trauma informed?
Yes.
The entire, the entire staff? That's what I thought I heard you and just wanted to make clarifying that. So that, that's wonderful. Thank you. So I look forward to actually seeing more of that sub-data on the, on the out-of-school suspensions as well. We'd really like to see some more of that.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Strategic Direction A.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We have a great team here today to discuss Strategic Direction A. So Director Bennett, Human Resources, Director Fry with Student, with Special Education, and Director Stunkel with Communications and Community Education. That was a mouthful. Our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. All belong, all succeed. And this evening, with Strategic Direction A, we have a focus on collaboration, respect, and courage. This is an informational update, so we will not be back for governance. As you know, we're focused on our strategic, our new strategic roadmap. And since this is the first time presenting this Strategic Direction A, just to reiterate, there was a process, a long process, where we had input from the community, staff, students, parents, stakeholders. And through that process, we're really able to determine the areas of focus for continuous improvement and establish new metrics. So this is the baseline year for that. So I think we will dive right in. Starting off, so Strategic Direction A is improving our students' experience and school climate. So with the first metrics is the percentage of licensed staff participating in health and wellness professional development. So this is really, has been a big area of focus for us. And so we're looking at data from last year. So eighty-one to ninety percent is where we're at and that progressing. And it looks like out of, looks like we had two hundred and six folks participate in different mental hea, or health and wellness professional development last year. And then student consistent attendance is the next, is the next metric. And right there, we're at baseline between seventy-four and eighty-four percent. The third one is staff absences.
So looking at all staff absences, so as Principal DeWitt said, we really want the teachers in the classroom with the kids and the substitutes filling in for them. So looking at personal illnesses. We did have an eight percent reduction, looking at seventeen, eighteen compared to eighteen, nineteen. The one thing I will note is we switched HR systems in the middle of it, so the way we track it's a little bit different. But we did have a reduction in the total number of personal illness absences between those two years. Going into staff wellness benefits outreach initiatives. Looking at last school year, some of this includes, we have a benefit specialist. So she's been reaching out. We did health or insurance enrollment meetings. She held before school this year, Benefits 101. We had our bags last year with our jump ropes and our water bottles. We also get information out to the labor management and non-licensed labor management about some initiatives we have, like the Learn to Live, which is online counseling that staff could use. Yeah, and we have our wellness committee, so just doing wellness initiatives.
So for the fifth metric, student sense of social emotional security. This is where the, the whole, full team works on promoting that climate survey, making sure that the different students, staff, and parents are participating in the climate survey. So the, the measures that you see there, the numbers, are based on the National Climate Survey. So four point one to five would be at vision, based on the national norms. So this, when we surveyed the students last year on their sense of social and emotional security, they were right there at baseline at three point one. So room for growth there. Again, with the student survey, or the climate survey, the first measure there, student sense of physical security, again at baseline. Right at three point four for that one. Yes, three point four.
And then also looking at the employee retention rate. So again, we don't look at like retirees or staff that we non-renew for performance, but staff that are leaving our district. We were at ninety-four percent, which we've been at for the last couple of years, is right around that number, ninety-four, ninety-five. And then looking at staff satisfaction with working conditions. We didn't do the survey April of last year. We did it April of twenty eighteen. And this has been part of the strategic direction in the past, but we upped the metrics because we were at vision for a long time. So right now, we're at progressing because we did lower the metric a little bit. But it's also, April's a tough time of year for people too, when they're taking the survey. But I think, I think it was seventy-eight or seventy-nine percent, so we're right there, kind of at the cusp of vision.
The last metrics here on this slide is disciplined data, specifically out-of-school suspension. The metrics here are, are designed based on reviewing the last few years of data and, and what have been the norms and where, where do we have room for improvement? So for last school year, we were at, in the orange there, at three thirteen. And we're setting a goal to continue to reduce that to get to baseline through progressing and vision. So there's definitely, that's where the question came up for room for growth. That's exactly how this metric was designed, knowing where we are and where we need to go. So here's the dial, and again, this is baseline data. So next year, there'll be two lines to show where we grew.
Do they have any questions?
Yeah, when, when you were talking about the, the data for the out-of-school suspensions.
Yes.
So you're using, we're using the same metric across every building?
Yes, so this is the district-wide.
Okay, so this is in comparison to the district?
Yep, this is the, all the district data altogether. And then with, when the schools present, that's where they have, based on their school population. And the reason it's designed that way is, you know, the high school has over a thousand students versus Highland that has over, you know, almost six hundred students. So there's that discrepancy there, which is why the school-based ones are based on a percentage rather than numbers.
But it, but it's, it's using the same.
Same measure for the schools, percentage-wise. But then district-wide, we're looking at that number because I, we have asked, you know, that's what we're have available.
Anybody else? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Annual report.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Deputy Director Tara Tuckrell and I are here this evening to share with you the draft of the annual report. Of course, our mission is creating worlds of opportunity for each and every learner. And the annual report really focuses on the core value of collaboration and community. Let me pull that up.
And we're here tonight as an informational item. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. We're here tonight as informational item and will be back November twelfth as an action item. And the annual report's really an opportunity for us to highlight the past school year. So looking at twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, especially looking at that focus of world's best workforce and the goals that we have as a district and our progress towards them. It is a collaboration between the communications department and teaching and learning. So really working together on looking at last school year and summarizing the year together. So we thought we'd take a walkthrough and just show you the format and the content of it. And you have this digitally as well.
So the cover? With all of our branding packages, thank you, from the communications department.
This next page really is that focus on the world's best workforce goals and strategies and what we're going to be doing to work towards the next school year. We work with our world's best workforce committee, which meets multiple times a year. And it's comprised of staff, students, community members, parents that are on there, as well as law enforcement is on there, coming together and really looking at what are our goals according to the Minnesota Department of Education for world's best workforce. They have five main goals. So what are our district goals and then how are we working towards them each year? So they help support, we're looking at the strategies as well as the goals that we create.
So and one, upon approval, this annual report will be posted on the website, but then also mailed home to residents. So moving to the third page, this is a snapshot, a one-pager kind of snapshot for what each of the schools and departments offer. So be it Blooming Heights, our personalized learning programs, activities and athletics. This is kind of a one-pager to show, you know, a little bit of highlights for each of the schools and programs.
The next two pages are really Columbia Heights by the numbers. So looking at some of the different numbers throughout the district, from enrollment to looking at students, the different celebrations we have, as well as looking at the financial piece. So the, working with Denise and her team, looking at where are we spending most of our money as it comes in and really showing that and being transparent with the different areas. And then celebrating as well, some of those scholarships and that big number there of the amount of money students are saving by the programs that we have at the high school, which includes the advanced placement tests, early college, PSEO, all of those different opportunities that they have, how much money they're saving for that. This page is our Highlander highlight, so looking at some of the top news stories that happened last year in our district, all the way from early childhood, childhood up, and also including some of our staff that we recognized.
There's two pages of that?
There's two pages. Our students are amazing and beautiful, so we made sure to focus on them so you can really see all the great things that are happening. And then at the end, we really, knowing that it's mailed out, putting that contact information. So if they want any more details on it or have questions. And last year, we did have a parent reach out and joined our world's best workforce committee. So that was exciting as well. So they wanted to take part in it. Any questions? We scrolled through it really fast.
I would say, I, again, I like the format. I like the goals. I think, you know, we've talked, I'm not gonna keep talking about it every year, I promise, but I think that that's important to have. I also like the inclusion of, of some of the finance piece. I think, you know, really looking at kind of where the dollars are going and how those are, are directly affecting our students. I like the, that information in this one.
Thank you.
I may have been reading when you did it, but the, one of the things on, that I'm looking at here, it actually talks about the world's best workforce goals and strategies. That's in there as well? That's what you said? Okay, that's all I needed. I think I was reading, so.
We do want to thank Lauren Grimes from the communications department. She is amazing with the formatting of the annual report. Always has new ideas and different ways that are really clear to get the message out.
Anybody else? On November twelfth?
We'll be back.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is a policy first reading. It'd be the first reading for four oh two, which is disability and non-discrimination policy. Four one four, which is mandated reporting of child neglect, physical and sexual abuse. Four nineteen, tobacco-free environment. Four twenty-one, gifts to employees. These policies appear in a future general for approval. So this will be the first time that'll go out. Do the reading and then the information's available for anybody that's out there. Does anybody have any questions on any of those? We will move on to our action items. Our action item tonight is a superintendent's goals for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty presented with questions and answers provided at the last work session. Start with a motion in a second to move this forward, if I could, please.
So moved.
Molly?
Second.
Hala? Thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, also, if they ever say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that motion carries. At this point, in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero three, the board will meet in closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiation strategies. Okay. At eight oh six, we're returning to open session. We were in a closed session in accordance with Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero three. We met in a closed session for the purpose of discussion, discussing negotiation strategies. Next up on our agenda would be board topics. Anybody anything for board topics this evening?
The last home game for the Strikers adapted soccer team is tomorrow at four thirty.
There actually is going to be a site visit for Carner Blue. So if you didn't have an opportunity to, to see that facility yet, it's really amazing. And we own a piece of it, so we should go out there and see some of the great stuff that they're doing. That is on the fourteenth at nine AM.
November?
November fourteenth. It's a Thursday.
I would concur. We'll also put some of that in the update. I know that both Executive Director Stanbik and we have about eighteen kids out there, so it's, it's really nice if you haven't seen it, experience if you have the time.
Do you have the times?
Ah, it's at nine AM.
It's an hour.
It's an hour, yeah. In, in addition to that too, there's some really, really good data that's coming from Carner Blue on how the students that are, that are, are going there are really acclimating really well and they're being able to return to their, to their classrooms too. So, and then these are, these are students, they're not, it's not just autism. Usually, these students have a variety of different issues, often trauma or other issues that are also in behavioral issues. So these are students that need a lot of extra support. And just the, the, the climate of the school and the way that they deliver the instructions and the safety of the building, it's just really amazing to see. You can go in there and there could be a hundred and fifty kids and it doesn't feel like there's more than five kids in the whole school. It's just, it's just really an amazing place. And I'm, I'm, I'm really grateful to be in a district that was, that, that actually, you know, participates in us. It is a, it is a beacon. People come out there all the time that, that want to get toward. People come out there all the time that, that want to get tours, and they're actually not able to do that a lot because it can be disruptive, because they want to have tours pretty much all the time. So it's a good opportunity, if you get a chance to, to go out there and see what, what is happening, you know, for our kids out there. In addition to that, the, the facility out at Lake Elmo is, as well. It's a, a slightly different concept. It's not nature-related. This one, the one at Carner Blue is all based upon nature. There are the themes out in Lake Elmo, why am I not remembering the name of the, Pankalo, is, is actually based on the arts, you know? But it's a, it's a similar type of a building, although I still love Carner Blue more. So please, if you get a chance to, please come out and, and take a look at it if you haven't, if you haven't seen it yet.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else, board topics? Hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at eight oh nine.